At this time, 6:19, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll do a roll call.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medosa?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Neal is away on work. Councilmember Bucelado is away on work. Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Based on the fact that we have four members, which four members are a quorum, if someone leaves that's on Zoom or someone leaves that's at the table, we will need to take a pause. So please make sure that you re-note when we need to pause the meeting.
Acknowledged.
At this time, we'll go to item number three, call for the public. We do have one call for the public request in person to Mr. Keith Eaton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Keith Eaton and I'm a resident of Florence. First of all, I just want to do a couple compliments. So what a great road to country thunder. So that was a fantastic deal, and I know this is not part of the work session, but thank you for that. That was awesome. Part of the work session is the team over here, the finance team, another amazing report that was given out. 300-plus pages was a lot to go through, but anyway, another fine job by Ms. Jimenez and her team. I just have a couple comments on this. So as I went through this, I do have one question and one respectful request. Is on page six of six of the summary underwater line replacement. W-38 shows an $80,000 budget for engineering and then next year, $600,000 for the actual project. My respectful request is that to move those up into, instead of spinning them out for five years, to increase those budgets. I think our citizens, business and restaurant owners of south of the Gila would really appreciate this to be a priority. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak? Nobody online, so at this time, I will close, call for the public, and move to item number four of the work session on the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget capital improvement plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we are here to look at the FY25 CIP plan. So we have the CIP review scheduled for two nights. If we don't complete tonight, we can bring it back tomorrow night, and we will bring this item May 6 for adoption. Tonight, we're going to go in order by department. We have 85 items in this plan. 69 are budgeted in FY25. I did have an error on the quick reference guide on the first sheet, Community Services, item 5. That item is actually on page 89. And so what we propose tonight is to go item by item. We're looking for council's consensus. If there's an item that they want us to remove, let us know, and we will take that out when we bring back on May 5. So if that, and I do want to ask, does Mayor and Council want to go line by line or do they want to address the items that they've noted?
I would say line by line.
Line by line? Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. So with that, we will start with Community Services. And Mayor, would you like the department director to present these or did you want me to go in order?
Vice Mayor? I'm fine if you have them in order.
You're fine with what?
If he goes in order, I'm fine. If you want to do it by department, I'm fine with that as well.
And do you want the director to bring him up or do you want me to go? Emcee this?
We can, we'll have the directors come up.
Yeah, that way they can, they can fight for it or not.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Community Services has multiple items tonight. I'll go through them each one by one. I'll give a brief description and then entertain any questions or comments as you have. First item is the 60-inch deck mower. This is a replacement item for an item that's been with us for many years. So it's well past its age of life, and it really is costing us a lot of maintenance and actually downtime. And as well as when it's up and running, it's inefficient. So it is needing for replacement. Did you want me to pause for comments or questions, Vice Mayor? Or just go through and?
I think you can just run through each one. You can just state the title if you have questions you can ask about it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right, great. The next item? The next item is the aquatics complex replacement equipment. So this is for the diving boards with the fulcrums and also the lifeguard chairs that are mobile. We have four of those. We're wanting to replace two of those. Those have been with us for the last 10 years since the aquatics complex has been open. The diving boards themselves are 10 years old. They are showing rust and signs of age. We want to prevent any safety items and replace those as well. The other one is for a automatic pool vacuum. This would give us two vacuums to vacuum each body of water, both the lap pool and the play pool simultaneously. And the, it would create more efficient and eliminate downtime of the pool when it does get dirty from the dust storms, et cetera, that we have to prepare for opening. We need a completely clear bottom pool to see the bottom according to state, county and federal laws. Next item is the ball field renovation of Heritage Park Complex and Little League fields. Although Little League field was done a few years ago, a couple years ago, actually, it may need some aggressive maintenance. The three complex, the three-field complex at Heritage Park does need some aggressive maintenance to get it back up to a level that's consistent with other municipalities for softball and baseball use. There's multiple items here. There's the gopher holes. There's in the outfield, there's undulations on the outfield. There's a lot of weeds as opposed to turf. There's a need to laser level the infield to make it a smooth playing surface. And then the transition from turf to grass in the outfield, that lip is what it's called, is pretty crucial to make sure there's no high hops or bad hops that are not predictable. So that maintenance item would be scheduled for next year if approved. Next item is banquet tables at the community center. These are, these are the round tables. If you've been to one of the events at the community center, we have them on tablecloths during nice events. But if we take the tablecloths off, they're really not much use as far as aesthetics for anything other than maybe kids' camps and craft projects. They have extended, some of them are cracking a little bit. They haven't extended, reached their lifespan end. And what we want to do is get different tables that are actually on wheels and easier for one staff to set up an entire room rather than have multiple staff have to set up one room. We have multiple transitions, sometimes limited time to do it, and this would be very helpful, not to mention the fact that they are at the end of their life. Okay, the brush truck trailer. So you'll see a few parks maintenance items on here. A lot of them are pieces of equipment. During my assessment this last few months, I noticed that we have old equipment. It's not taken care of as well as we need it to be or has ended its lifespan and, or simply we don't have the type of equipment needed to do certain jobs. And if we do, it's maybe not as efficient as we could be. So we want to try and increase that efficiency through some of these items. The brush dump trailer would help us with tree trimming, shrub trimming, and everything else that we have waste, green and other ways to remove from a site. This would allow staff to travel throughout their day with one load instead of a windshield time of back and forth and otherwise. So it'd be very efficient for us to have that.
Question, Paul. Is that enclosed or is it open?
This would probably be just a tarp, so open at the top, but it would have side panels. Okay, the next, next item is commercial refrigerator. This is for rentals of the community center. This would allow event users, those who are renting the facility from us, to keep their, their food and refreshments and cakes, et cetera, cold during their event until they're used. This is a common thing in most recreation facilities, and it's a really great thing to have when we're trying to sell a rental to a client. The current refrigerator in that kitchen is extremely small and really doesn't house very much. And we're always having to bring in coolers and try and figure out alternate items for clients.
Question, Paul?
Yes.
Is that going to be stainless or is it white?
We haven't selected a specific model or brand yet. We would do that based on price and need, but we don't have a specific. We would match it to the decor of the kitchen itself, so it's not outstanding, but...
So do you know what's in there already?
I'm sorry, what's in there?
Do you know what, what kind of refrigerators are in there? Are they the stainless type?
Yeah, it's a regular household kitchen like you'd find in maybe an apartment. It's about, I don't think it's even a 17 cubic inch.
Okay.
Or foot. Next item is a hot-cold power washer. Sorry about that. There's a need for ongoing maintenance, daily and weekly, to power wash certain areas and amenities. Picnic tables, concrete, the pool deck itself seasonally. So there's, there's multiple areas that if we had a power washer, we could be extremely efficient with not only cleaning off tables after dust storms, but removing grease from underneath the charcoal, barbecues and et cetera. So it'll help take off grease, graffiti and other items if we had that, which is the purpose of having the hot and the cold option. All right, the hydration station. So this one worked out really well this year. We have four of them that we've installed this year, and probably the most used is the one over at the ball field up against the restrooms, sorry, at the ball complex, three-plex at Heritage Park. We're, you're able to bring an empty bottle and do a bottle fill right there as opposed to take your chances with the water fountain against your mouth. So it's a, it's a really great option, and so we're wanting to continue that with the success that we've had with the community center, senior center, Main Street Park, Padilla Park, and then also the fifth one will be here at Town Hall.
Hey, Paul. Do those have the filter, filters built into them?
I believe they do have a filter inside them. I'd have to double check, though.
All right. Have we checked into whether or not we have the funds to replace those filters if they do have them?
I'm sorry, one more time, Vice Mayor?
We need to make sure we have the funds to replace the filters if they come with filters.
Absolutely. If they are filters, they're the smaller kind, so I will definitely look into that. But, and we'll prepare that in our budgets if that's the case. All right, the next item is the minivan for the Give a Lift program. Years ago, the senior center had a minivan that they used for, it was low-profile, easy to get into, and it ended its life, and they replaced it with a different van, but a little kind of high-profile van. So what we're wanting to do is replace that old minivan, get that back. Right now, senior center is using one of the recreation low-profile vehicles instead. But this minivan would have a wheelchair lift, and it would allow our staff to not have to worry about any physical issues, injuries, et cetera, by using the lift itself. So, and it would help with a lot of different mobilization issues and challenges with disabilities. So very helpful. The great thing about this is it is a matching grant. So the ADOT 53, 5310 grant program will replace this for, at matching funds. All right. Again, new tables at the library community center. The, these are the rectangle tables that we have for conferences, meetings, et cetera. The original tables bought for the community center are large, they're awkward, they're heavy, and they're really difficult for staff to move around quickly, which is what we need to do. The, the best possible scenario is for, again, the staff to be able to work independently alone when setting up a room. Usually, that's the front desk staff, and we need someone to come watch the front desk while they're setting up rooms and turning over classrooms. So, and this is for the, you know, not only the outside folks, but all of our internal programming as well. So it can be a big day.
I got a question. So if we budget for this, and when the new ones come, what do you guys do with the old ones?
We would first find out if anyone in the city needs, town needs to, would like to adopt them. The other option is to put them to surplus. I believe our process also is we ask the school district and other folks if they'd like them before.
Thanks.
All right. So the community center's AV system was not installed, is not, is not, we're not able to troubleshoot or repair with our current IT staffing and expertise. They, they've done their darndest to help us throughout the years, and they, and they help us duct tape it. But right now, we're calling out a third-party service to help us do that. And we're having issues with the connectivity between the microphones and the wall unit, the wall plates. They're just not listening and talking to each other. So just have some multiple issues with that. So to do that, to get that up and running, this project would help do that. And IT would be guiding that as well, so that after that, we could own it without having to use third-party maintenance and repair. Next item is Padilla Park fence repair and painting. So Padilla Park fencing is not in terrible shape. There are some signs of erosion in certain areas and where the rust is really showing its age of the fence. The biggest challenge, I think, is just the painting. So we want to put a fresh coat around it. It's fading. We want to make that shiny black again and really show off the perimeter of the park itself to give it a great entrance and a great feel when you first walk in. Padilla Park stage shade. So this is an effort to help with drawing additional events to Padilla Park itself. We would shade the stage and also just pass the shade into the audience as much as possible so that we could host performances there and continue to program that. So this item, this item is the, is in fiscal year '26.
Paul, for the perimeter fence, is there a way of like getting those like powder coated so they'd last longer so you don't have to paint them like the one at Padilla?
So the, the system that we've used in the past is electrostatic painting. That's what we would do here, and we could, we could definitely look into powder coating. I'm not sure honestly the process of powder coating, but I can certainly ask some questions to the fence companies on best practices.
Thanks.
So the next item is playground replacement. This will tie into the, one of the items that we have on our ADA accessibility list. It's to remove the fall material, the wood fiber, out of the playground at Heritage Park, both playgrounds at Heritage Park, and replace it with the, what they call porn place, which is kind of a spongy, soft material, but still solid enough to get chairs across and use as a solid surface. So we would tie that, these projects into that so that all would happen simultaneously. The, both playgrounds, the 2-5 and the 5-12 age playgrounds are both showing age. We, there's definitely some room for inventive programming and play within those to find specifically, to look for accessibility routes that, and then also appeal to other disabilities for sensory and others that, that we have the capability to do with today's types of equipment that's coming out in the market. Okay, so our Central Arizona project trail development. So this year, we're currently in the design phase, and that should be wrapping up towards the end of the year. We anticipate next year going into construction for that. It's just over five miles of trail using, following the CAP trail system, and we're working closely with the county on that and with the design firm. All right, Heritage Park water and other improvements. So some of this, these items, let's see, this is '26. So this is fiscal year '27, and we would, we've, we've already accomplished some of this through the lighting project that was done last year. We will continue that theme with what's in our master and general plans to make sure that we're following best practices and best design for the facility. It's always room for improvement, and the landscape and irrigation can certainly use some improvements. The restrooms and concessions building is going to get some improvements through this accessibility grant as well that we're working on currently for next year. All right, post imbute. So this would, this would, project will just continue from this year. We, we were wanting to try and piece some, some of it out this year. It didn't work out. We, we wanted to get a grant to, to help us. There's multiple types of grants available to, to do the trail improvements and then also some of the park furniture signage. So there's a capability of finding outside funding. We want to be able to take our time to make sure we get all the grants we can lined up to do that and save the town as much money as possible. So to do that, we're going to, we went ahead and moved this project to next year so that we can get a contractor on board for the trail improvements and, and move forward with that design. All right, so the rodeo grounds, the, these, these are items that... All right, the, so the rodeo grounds, the, um, uh, these, these are items that, um, multi-year project, uh, so this year, we're completing quite a few projects out there. Uh, next year, we're, we're looking to do that, and then the year after that, we're looking to, uh, continue projects. Uh, the project slated for fiscal year 25, we're looking at, um, doing, uh, construction on the parking lot. This year, we're working on design for that. Um, we're wanting to, um, re-scope the parking lot just a, a bit, so that it's more expanded. It has, uh, correct ADA, accessibility parking, and, um, really has a, a drainage, uh, system that works well. Uh, we have a RV dump site. The, the vision out there is to have, uh, overnight camping available. They'll have, uh, overnight, um, RV dump, dump stations, and then, uh, for the, uh, entrance and then wayfinding signage, uh, that's on for next year. The improvements, um, actually, a restroom and showers building, again, for camping and, and additional spectator and participant use. And then, uh, upgrading the arenas and pens that are out there. Um, those are the projects slated on next year's.
Oh, question. Um, for the, the, are there gonna be, like, electrical hookups too, for the, are there gonna be electrical hookups for the RVs?
So we, at this point, we don't have electrical running to, for camp sites, per se. We will, it'll be dry camping. We'll have, but we'll have the dump station, uh, at, uh, one location, uh, on-site.
Thanks.
So the architectural and, uh, barrier removal. So this is, um, this is a project that we're currently working on. This, uh, um, it's funded currently, we just got news that it's funded. It goes, uh, into next fiscal year, so these, uh, items are slated for expenditure next fiscal year, which is why you're seeing them. Um, a lot of them, those include the, what I mentioned, the playground surfacing, uh, at Heritage Park, the, the porn place, uh, material, the, um, restrooms, new partitions, doors, and, uh, lowering the sinks and moving the, um, the, uh, commodes and, and urinals inside the restrooms, so that they're ADA accessible. The other projects are at the senior center, I'm sorry, at the, at Heritage Park will have, um, uh, access to the basketball court and the skate park from the parking lot. Um, so that'll be 36-inch, um, wide sidewalks, so that, um, we're, uh, within the ADA requirements for 2010. The senior center will be doing parking lot improvement for ADA parking, and then access to the building for ADA.
So, Paul, so if there's any replacement of, uh, any, like, um, sinks or anything like that, or urinals, can we just make sure that it's, like, low-flow, or something that, you know, try to restrict in water? If it's gonna be something that's gonna be upgraded or something like that? I'm pretty sure you guys think of that, but just in case.
It's a great suggestion, council member. We'll, we definitely will make a note to make sure that we're using the most efficient equipment out there, in green. All right, the Parks Maintenance Building Shop. This is actually, um, part of our, with our acquisition of the compound that's owned by ADOT and the acquisition of Main Street Park. We're going to be able to utilize that compound in the future for, um, to house our parks maintenance staff and, um, some other town staff potentially. So we'll be using, um, these funds for design next year, uh, for designing the needs that we have, uh, for that complex, and then the following year in '26, we'll be, uh, uh, moving into construction phase for that and, um, completing that. All right, so this item is, um, specific for the turning access at the rodeo grounds, um, off the free, the highway. Um, it, it's, uh, been mentioned in several meetings that it is a potential hazard and could be safer, so we're working towards that to make that, uh, a safer situation for people coming. Uh, with this combined with the, uh, external signage that we're planning, um, we hope to make sure that people, uh, notice it is a, um, a, a venue to, and, and then, if they're looking for it, they can find it. And, uh, so we'll have that left turn lane. Okay, so the, um, replacement of the dog park fencing, so there's, there's only a section, uh, I think it's about 220 feet, that needs to be replaced. It includes a gate in the back area, um, kind of in that area right across from the police station. Um, there's a gate, but it is, uh, is non-functional right now. We have it locked and secured, uh, because it is just not functional. The fencing itself, um, will help with strengthening and tie into the entire fencing at the dog park, but again, it's just a portion of the fencing that needs to be replaced. The, uh, fencing at the skate park is, um, pretty old. It's, uh, aged and, and showing its wear. Is, one of the first things I noticed when I got here, we've had to do, uh, considerable maintenance, uh, on an ongoing basis to keep tying the, the pieces together. There's a lot of curling, both at the top and the bottom. Um, the, the chain link is a challenge at skate parks. Uh, they can almost use it as a springboard if, uh, if it's not very, very taut and, and well-maintained. So what we're suggesting is bringing in wrought iron fencing, uh, to, um, solve that problem. It'll make it aesthetically more pleasing, and it'll also be functional, uh, for, uh, accomplishing what we need to do, which is, uh, keeping people out when we want them out, uh, if the skate park is closed for wet, uh, wet surfaces, et cetera. We just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping, uh, and securing this, the space as best we can. So, the, uh, the next item is, uh, to replace the pool surfaces in the play pool and the, um, lap pool at the sport, uh, aquatics complex. The, normally with the quartz plaster, you want to replace that, uh, around the 10-year mark, and we're, we're there right now. It's, this was built in 2015, so we're coming up on our anniversary, our 10-year anniversary. Um, and, uh, it'd just be, it'd be a great, um, piece to go ahead and, and, uh, add this in as maintenance. It, it is considered regular maintenance, uh, it's crucial maintenance that needs to be done on a regular basis, uh, as it comes due. So scoreboards at the Heritage Ballfields, um, these are, uh, this was a special request, uh, from Little League Park, I'm sorry, Little League, uh, the Little League, Florence Little League. We, uh, also can use that for our, if, uh, if we began softball programming again, if we, if we had tournaments, uh, if the town were to program the, the fields, uh, more, then it would be, it'd be useful. So anywhere from softball to kickball, um, uh, to, uh, our, our little ones', uh, baseball, uh, programs, we could use the scoreboards as well, so it'd be a great addition to have. And it would also allow Little League to, it's one of the requirements that Little League has to, um, bringing in, uh, to hosting, uh, certain tournaments and, uh, programs from, uh, attract, so attracting other folks from around the valley and even regionally. So synthetic turf has really come a long way in the last, uh, decade or so, as far as technologies. Uh, it used to be pretty warm, uh, to the touch in the middle of the summer. It's continuing to get better and better. Um, it is gonna be, uh, at ambient temperature or higher, but, uh, it is, uh, it is, the technology's really improved. Um, what we're suggesting is, um, multiple areas, uh, in downtown, couple of small areas in downtown, at Ariola Square, uh, Hocke Square, the community center, and Main Street Park Playground area are some key areas that we've identified to, to really, uh, put this project to work. There is, um, there's, there's, uh...
Paul, I got a question?
Yes.
So, um, I, I think I had read something where there were certain grants for taking away stuff that used water and putting stuff like this. Um, I don't know if that's something we could look at, um, and trying to recoup some of that money. Um, I don't, I don't know if that, if that was something that was viable.
Yeah, good question, council member. Thank you. Um, we, we are still working on looking for rebates and grants, uh, in, in different areas. I know that Casa Grand just came up, just, just obtained one, so I'm working with them to find out what exactly they, they utilize to do that. So we'll be working with, um, uh, our grants coordinator to make sure that we, um, cover all our bases and save the town as much as possible if this moves, moves forward.
All right, thanks.
So, some of the, the features of this project, um, it, um, it would save the, the town over $14,000 in water. That alone is great, but really, we have, um, limited parks maintenance staff and time to do a lot of the things that we need to do, since these areas are so, um, tied into Main Street and the view that the visitor gets and even the, uh, the, uh, residents get from, uh, and the feel that they, they get when they come down Main Street. Um, we want to make sure that these are improved. Um, it would save us over 400 hours in maintenance time a year, just by, just to mow these areas and line trim them, not to mention fertilization, aerating, and caring for the turf, uh, that that really becomes expensive and time-consuming. All right, the stump grinder, this is one of my favorites. Um, one of my, um, observations since I've come to, to Florence is that we just haven't been able to, um, remove the stumps from the, uh, the ground surface. Uh, so we want to prevent any trip hazards, we want to have aesthetics, uh, correct and the best it can be, and, um, we really want to be able to, to, uh, grow turf over those if, if we want to. So rather than pull out the roots and the stumps themselves, which takes a lot of time, effort, and equipment, um, we can actually dro, grind these stumps below ground level and cover them up with dirt. And, um, it's a great solution and can be employed here in Florence. And that's the end of my items. I will take any other questions, if, uh, there are any.
I don't have any.
I did.
I don't have any other.
Mayor, council members, I, um, I do have one more item, uh, we did miss in our presentation. The, um, flatbed trailer, this would, um, this would help us haul our new tractor. We just brought a new, small tractor with a backhoe and front-end loader, um, and it also has attention, uh, attachments that we can use at different areas in our sites around town. Having a trailer to tow that tractor, plus mowers, plus the stump grinder and, and other equipment, um, it really would be helpful and, and, again, efficient for our staff, so that we're not using windshield time, uh, daily. The, that does conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, um, were there any items in, uh, community services that you wanted to address, um, pull out or change?
I'm good.
I feel comfortable with what was presented.
Okay. Um, with that, we'll move to fire, next.
Thank you for, uh, being here tonight to hear the requests that we have in front of you. For the fire department, we have, uh, 11 requests. Uh, you will note that nine of them are all service-related, while two of them are investment-protection-related, all of which help us, uh, serve the community better. The first, uh, item that we have here is an alternative medication restock, uh, program. Currently, uh, the medications that we deliver to patients in the field, uh, are provided through pharmacy and agreements. When we deliver medications, there, there are, sometimes we can, uh, exchange, uh, medications or replace medications with, uh, AMR, and there are also times where we have to travel, uh, to the hospital or outside the community to replace our medications. This, our alternative system is a restock system that would be placed in both of the fire stations, still in partnership with the pharmacies, and our firefighters would be able to restock the equipment as soon as they're, uh, back to the fire station. It puts our, uh, equipment back in service much quicker and, uh, prepares our emergency responders for the next, uh, response without any delay of medication delivery. The second item that we have here, cardiac monitors. Cardiac monitors, uh, assist our paramedics in identifying problems and complaints. They help us analyze patients and patient needs. These monitors, uh, come in, uh, a hand-carried, uh, case that we currently get updates annually, and then we'll get loners annually, but those cases start to wear out, and the replacement of the, um, computers inside are upgraded and different elements of the monitors become upgraded. The current monitors that we have have reached the end of their serviceable life, and these cardiac, these cardiac monitors are in an effort to replace those and stay current with, uh, the updated equipment. The next item is fire hose replacement. This is a continuation of what has existed in this current year. We have replaced, uh, some of our hose. There is a bit of a delay on, uh, getting, uh, the fire hose in, but this is something that we will be bringing, uh, forward every year now, as we get our equipment up to date. We want to make sure that we have enough hose for all the equipment that we have, all of the apparatus. of the apparatus that we carry, and we want to make sure that our hose is up to date and tested properly. We need to test our hose annually, and if any of our hose fails its testing, we would need to replace it through this, through this replacement system. We would be doing this every year. This next item is a fitness equipment replacement. Again, this is part two of what we were doing. We've replaced some of that in the current year. This is for Station One. The equipment that the firefighters use currently was donated to the Fire Department several years back. That was a great equipment to get us through. This now helps us replace that equipment, keeps it current. It's in the station where crews can use it at their convenience anytime that they're on duty, and when various members of the crews have different responsibilities, other members of the crews can be using that so that they don't have to leave the station to stay in shape and utilize this equipment. The next request here is for the new Pierce engine equipment replacement. A couple of years ago, council had approved the purchase of a new Pierce fire engine. That Pierce fire engine was paid for and ordered, still unfortunately is not delivered, but it is in the build process right now, and we are pushing really hard to get that vehicle delivered by August of this year. Once that vehicle gets here, we will need to have all the equipment that would go on to the vehicle mounted. So the equipment replacement here is for all the new equipment that goes on this vehicle. It includes the mounting and everything except for hose and medical equipment. This next item, painting of Station Two interior. Station Two was built in 2014. It was still existing with its original paint on the interior. This is just to keep our facility looking clean and neat, and also, although we keep our facilities clean, it is healthy to make sure that we don't have any other pathogens that could cause problems to our firefighters or visitors in the facility. This next request is portable replacement. We call it replacement, but we also consider it an addition if we have portables that continue to be serviceable. Right now, we don't have the level that we need for backup, so when events like this week take place, we have to spread our equipment thin. Some of the equipment goes with our responders out to the Country Thunder event, and then the rest of the equipment stays in service here in the town. Right now, we have exactly what we need to make that happen. This is a replacement should any of the equipment that we currently have fail, or if those items that we have are still serviceable, this gives us reliable backups. We will be coming back each year with a request to replace these every year, and we will slowly see units go out of service, and we will have plenty of backups and plenty of serviceable equipment should we have any problem. And we'll see the life cycle of these pieces of equipment be replaced systematically as we do this annually. This next item is a self-contained breathing apparatus item, or SCBA's. These are the air cylinders that our firefighters wear into our IDLH atmospheres, our immediate problems for life safety. We utilize these in these smoke-filled atmospheres. They're carried on all of our pieces of equipment, and every firefighter that is going to be in those IDLH atmospheres would be donning this piece of equipment. This piece of equipment can change with technology, but we do need to make sure that we are keeping up with the replacement and serviceability of these. As we buy more fire engines, it's nice to have extra equipment so that our reserve equipment is fully outfitted. This would help us fully outfit those, and then it also helps us to replace them should any of them fail, or over time, it'll keep us in their serviceable life. This next unit is a side-by-side emergency response vehicle, similar to what you see in the Police Department. This is a vehicle that carries a fire pump and water, carries fire extinguishers and medical equipment, and can seat up to four firefighters. This vehicle will be very useful for the many events that we have here in our town. It's a quick access to many of the points in the town. When we see fires start, we call that in its incipient stage. If we can get to fires quickly with these vehicles that are easily maneuvered through the town and through areas where there are large crowds, we can make quicker attacks on the fires and stop the progression while we bring our bigger equipment in and clear the way for our bigger equipment. This piece of equipment also would allow us much easier access into areas that are serviced by the Fire Department that don't have currently paved roads or gravel roads. This would be a great addition for our service and would serve our community very well. This next item on here is a storage facility. At Fire Station One, currently, we have two bays that are drive-through bays at Station One. One of them, we just have it full of equipment from door to door. The other one, we currently utilize to allow our first response engines to drive from the back of the station through to the front of the station so that crews don't have to back up each time that they return to the station. We are currently short of storage for our very expensive equipment, so some of our equipment is sitting underneath outside awning areas. This would allow us to put this emergency equipment inside and keep it protected from the elements, and would keep our units' response ready and safe from, protected inside a locked environment. Currently, we do have a number of vehicles that are stored outdoors, and we'll be taking delivery of new vehicles soon. This just helps us keep all of that safe and prepared to respond. Our last request is for turnout replacement. This is also something that we will be coming back every year for. It's for the personal protective equipment of firefighters, so helmets, jackets, pants, boots, gloves, masks for our SCBA's. Those are things that we personally issue, and they all expire over time. We also like to have a full, complete frontline set and a full, complete backup set, so when our firefighters return from an incident, they can take the gear that has carcinogens on them, put them through a cleaning process, and have a full set of gear ready to go as soon as they get back. We also need to make sure that we inspect this equipment every year, that it passes the inspection, and any equipment that doesn't pass the inspection that needs to be replaced can readily be replaced. That is all 11 items on our request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, were there any items from the Fire Department you would like to address?
I'm good.
I have no questions.
I have no further questions.
I do want to make a comment. We will be working with the Fire Chief to get a better understanding of the SCBA's and the turnout replacements in the next few weeks.
Our next item is IT, and we have Trent on the line.
Thank you, Carl. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight I'm bringing toward, to you two items for the IT department. The first item is our desktop computer replacements. This is a standard replacement schedule that we follow within the town of replacing each device every three to five years. We do push some devices much longer than that where necessary and, and is applicable, but for the most part, we, we try to get a useful life of three to five years for everyone's desktops. This is continuation of this fiscal year. We're currently slated to replace 40 to 50 desktop computers this fiscal year and continue on into next fiscal year through 2027. A good majority of our desktop computers are running the Windows 10 operating system, which is end of support as of October 2025. Those will be replaced before that date, so they will become current with the latest technology and standardized across the board. My next item and final item is our server infrastructure. This is to replace our legacy server infrastructure. We have several servers that run within our data center here at the town that provide services for a good majority of our administrative operations, engineering operations, some of our water, wastewater operations, et cetera. That's all housed in our secure data center, our file server, all of town files, backups, et cetera. That equipment typically, I get a service life of seven to eight years. They really should be replaced every three to five years, but with proper maintenance, they're able to, and being in a clean environment like our data center, they're able to run much longer. We do have several that are completely end of life and need to be replaced. In addition, we gain the benefit of running the latest hardware, latest server architecture, improved performance, improved proficiency, so on and so forth. Additional storage capacity, and it just continues us to, allows us to operate on a continued basis. With that, are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Thanks, Trent. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, any objections to these items?
No.
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 Our next department is Police, and Chief Walls will be coming up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Police Department has six items on the CIP list. All six will be purchased through a grant process that council has previously approved. We have our dispatch console furniture, our dispatch consoles, our interoperable communications, which are our mobile radios in each of our police cars, our mobile data computers, which are also in our police cars, and then tasers, all of which have either reached end of life or well beyond their life. And then last is the body worn cameras. Police Department has been trying to get body worn cameras since I have been here. This is standard issued equipment for all police departments, and with the purchase of these, we will be bringing our Police Department into the 21st century. Questions?
I have one. Prior, have we been putting in for body cameras, and we're just not getting the grants for them?
Yes, ma'am. We have been putting in for body worn camera grants since I have been here. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten any. Most of that has been through the Toto Odom grant. I am meeting with Chief Elton Belton, I think sometime this week, and we're going to talk about that to see what we can do to improve that relationship.
Well, why don't we put it in just to purchase it this year?
We have put that in for purchase, but again, we got approved for the grant, so we were just going to go ahead and utilize the grant money to go ahead and purchase those body worn cameras.
Okay, now I understand. I just wanted to make sure that we were going to receive funding for it. If not, we wanted to provide funding for it.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate that, but working with finance, we got that worked out in your Police Department. We'll be getting body worn cameras this year.
Chief question. So I went in and looked at you guys' armory and saw some of you guys' rifles, and they dated back to Vietnam era. Is there any plan to replace those anytime soon?
Yes, sir. We've also been talking with finance and the deputy town manager. That's something that we're probably going to be looking at next fiscal year to go ahead and replace, but right now, in regards to what we're using, we're fine.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, any objections on any Police Department items?
No.
No.
Next department is Public Works. Chris Solis.
So this is just Streets?
This is just general Public Works. So here's the item.
I'm clicking through each one of these.
Yeah, and then I'll bring up Streets next.
Okay. The first item is actually accessories to our existing piece of equipment, the compact track loader, which resides within the Streets Department. So a lot of times you'll see these on the side of a road or a construction project. It's a little white, what referred to as a Bobcat. Ours is not that brand, but it's a small device that we utilize, and so we are looking at an existing, to an existing piece of equipment, a hydraulic hammer to break out some of the concrete, a standard flow brush cutter, a utility broom, and a cold planer. These are all proprietary devices that go with this piece of equipment. The design is going on as part of this. This is commonly known as the North End Framework LOMAR. This is the Phase One, so this will be the additional approximately 40 acres of reclamation that will come out of the floodplain that is east, I'm sorry, west of the current facilities and the current aquatic center, if you will. This is a project that's already been approved in the CIP and is ongoing on the design currently. This piece of parcel that is going to be reclaimed could be utilized as part of multiple projects that are listed in our, our planning study. This would include MDR-1, MDR-2, and MDR-3, and any of those could be reconfigured to house the forthcoming multi-generational facility as well. These could be marketed to the private sector. These could be utilized for a number, but again, these are currently utilized, I mean, planned for medium density to high density housing units within our plan. The Public Works Department would like to purchase a survey drone. This drone will pay for itself within two projects, so this, this will be utilized for topographic survey. We probably spend on all of our roadway designs and other projects well over $100,000 a year in just having survey work. We have multiple projects going on right now that are planned in this year's budget and next year's budget where we could utilize the survey drone, and like I said, it'll pay for itself in approximately two projects. It could last more than the 10 years as the useful life, but with technology is moving so fast, it probably isn't very realistic. ten years as the useful life, but with technologies moving so fast, it probably isn't very realistic. But it's possible the equipment that is attached to the survey drone could be upgraded in the future, and just the drone itself could be, continue to have a useful life.
So, Chris, I got a question. So could this drone be used by, like, say, Parks and Rec, like, for, like, you guys in Parks and Rec, didn't you guys just have somebody come out and have a drone out? Like, can it be, can it be multipurpose use?
So we do have the advertising company Blossom come out and do drone videos for us. It's more of a marketing specialty rather than just having a drone license, so it may not apply apples to apples, but it's certainly something we can look at partnering with if this, if this is purchased.
So Public Works currently has a drone that would probably be a little bit more applicable to that. This is very unique. It's not that it couldn't be. It could probably be configured for a multitude of things. So as Director King said, we can look into evaluate that.
Thank you.
The next piece of equipment is a valve exerciser. So this piece of equipment will be connected to our forthcoming asset management system. It'll tie into our GIS as well, which will tie into our asset management system. This will look at where the valve is at, so it'll locate it, again, geospatially. It will determine or count how many rotations of that valve. It will actually have an algorithm built into it, so if it reaches a torque threshold, instead of breaking the valve, it will stop, turn it the other direction, and then turn it back, turn it the other direction until the valve is exercised. This is pretty much standard equipment in today's world, especially as a community that is growing, as ours is, to have this type of specialized equipment. It also will reduce the amount of injuries to the personnel from turning valves. This type of exercises is very trying on the person's elbows and what have you as they're trying to turn all these valves. Some of these valves, depending on the size, could be fifty and sixty turns. So this piece of equipment, again, is about data logging, protection of the employees by having a piece of equipment there, and again, tying into our forthcoming asset management software. Okay. I was wondering where that was. We also have a second drone, and this is a weed abatement drone. We have had discussions, quite possibly, with community services on the sharing of this drone here, but this way that this is currently spec, the specifications would be utilized for us at the wastewater plant, at the water plants, as well as away from the downtown area, and maybe more of the rural highways. So along Hunt Highway, where there are no houses next to it, along Arizona Farms, where there's no houses next to it, along Jed Road, all those areas right there, where there are no houses next to it. We will be looking at utilizing this on the Streets Department, as well as, again, water and wastewater. The amount of area at the wastewater plant is a timely issue, and we haven't necessarily had the greatest of luck utilizing contractors to resolve that issue. So we would like to try a different technique in utilizing the weed abatement drone.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, any further discussion on these five items?
No.
No question.
No questions.
No, Streets. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, the next department is Streets, and there are fourteen projects. Seven of these projects are for FY25. Six start in FY26, and one starts in FY27. So would council like to go through each one of these, or do you want to focus on the projects for next year?
I would say just once for next year.
Agreed.
I agree.
Well, the council wanted to focus on just this forthcoming year. I wanted to take a second to discuss maybe what's not going to now be covered in there, is that we have multiple planning level projects for Adamsville Road. It's a two-phase project, as well as Butte Road. We are currently in the process of starting a specific transportation study for this area, and we are also looking at today, along Butte Road, the ability to push a collector, if you will, through that corridor. So think of it as something that is forty feet wide, and you are trying to see if that fits within the areas, and then where it doesn't fit, what would need to be done in order to provide a new transportation facility in that area. So that could be a right-of-way acquisition. That could be a narrowing of a road in that specific area. It could be a multitude of things, but think of it again as maybe a feasibility study to figure out what will fit in that corridor. So if that stuff is not covered tonight, I wanted to make sure that at least it was brought up in discussion. So the first project is Adamsville Road. This would be from Main Street to Plant Road, and that would be replacing this with AC pavement. It would be a minor collector. The next project is a little bit different than what we've talked about in the past. And so T112 is the highway widening from the curve to Addaway Road and actually beyond. So where the Anthem improvements end before you are traveling essentially southbound at that point on Hunt Highway, before you start to travel eastbound, those improvements essentially ceased, and you get back to a two-lane rural highway. And this project would widen from there, four lanes, all the way to Addaway Road, plus another approximately quarter of a mile to the east, and then provide turn lanes at the Addaway intersection. The difference between this project and what we've talked in the past is in order to make this a safe, high-capacity corridor, the roads need to intersect at ninety-degree angles, and it currently does not. In fact, where the road from Addaway ties in, it literally ties in at a curve, which is very non-industry standard. You rarely see something like that. So the idea would be to move that Hunt Highway four hundred feet to the north and allow everything to be at right angles, or what is referred to as an orthogonal intersection. This is approximately an eight million dollar project. This is one of the projects that we submitted for in the legislature, the previous opportunity, and we will continue to look at different ways of funding this project. We have started the design for this project. It is underway. We previously had a design concept report for this corridor, where we looked at three different intersections. One in its current configuration, one, the one that was chosen, moving the section to the north, and then just trying to create a right-angle intersection in this, in this area. And this provides the lowest cost for the highest safety available. This is not necessarily the cheapest project, but overall, this was considered to be the best project, especially long-term. Sometime in the month of April, the town should be putting out a solicitation for a construction manager at risk, a C Mar contractor, to participate in the pre-design services for this project. And so we are trying to deliver this project as fast as possible. However, we still have, we still are under the same constraints as the previous project. Most likely, we are still going to need to do some widening within the skip right-of-way at the canal. We are currently looking at if there's a project available that will help with the level of service of this intersection while not requiring any improvements within the skip right-of-way. But we are still, we are still working with skip to try to get a permit for the last project, which was referred to as T91, hoping that that will stay with us as we permit T112 for that same footprint, if you will. T116 intersection improvements at SR79 Hunt Highway. We've funded this project for the last several years with ADOT not having any funding coming available for the traffic signal in the right turn lane. I think at this point, staff is going to recommend installing the right turn lane separate from the traffic signal, but having ADOT perform a review of the plan to make sure it meets with their forthcoming geometrics. That has been the struggle with this project, without having an understanding of their design of the intersection. From a traffic signal perspective, it would not be the normal procedure to move forward on it. So we're hoping to work with ADOT and get that constructed early in the next fiscal year. T12 is the Butte Avenue Bridge. This project has been fully designed for what feels to be about eight to nine months, and this is another project where we've not been able to obtain the skip approvals for the crossing of their facility, as well as we are still having an inability to get the state of Arizona to participate in moving their facilities. They are, they are not accepting our assertion of prior rights, and they have not been able to provide us any documentation of prior rights. So at this point, we do not have their cooperation to move their facilities at their cost. T14 is under construction today. The town is responsible as part of the IGA between us and the state of Arizona, or the Arizona Department of Transportation, for any cost overruns on that project. So if there are unforeseen change orders that needed to occur, the town is 100% responsible for those change order costs. T48 Centennial Park Avenue. This is being evaluated as part of that other project, as I was explaining, between providing a transportation corridor on Adamsville, along Plant Road, and Butte Avenue, and quite possibly taking Centennial Park from Adamsville all the way down to 287. That's being evaluated to see if that is needed from a transportation perspective. And then lastly, T69 is our pavement preservation. That is actually funded out of our transportation excise tax, and that has been going on for all eight of my years, and I believe this is a $600,000 a year pavement preservation. So this goes for any chip seals that are done in the downtown, any striping that is done, any re, anything that is maintenance-related, and it is the same maintenance fund that we use for doing the projects in Anthem, where, again, a sealant is applied, a topical sealant, if you will.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, is there any items to discuss or remove in the Streets Department?
No.
No.
I have one question. On the T112 project, what's holding us up on that project? Or what haven't we seen that is coming to fruition, or to make this come to fruition?
So this project has just gotten underway, but I think I understand the question. So on T91, which was just the intersection improvements, that was for $900,000, we have not been able to get a permit from skip. So that was the holdup for that project. We are working within the right-of-way, and they have to give us a permit in order to do that work. This project, because that project has taken so long, it is no longer an interim project at that point. Staff feels like we should be moving forward with the ultimate project at this point, since we don't have an approval, and it's seemingly not coming anytime soon, to actually do the full project. It seems strange to spend $900,000 and then rip it out a year later. At this point, the other project was supposed to be done several, several years ago. Approximately 2019, that project should have went in. So it would have had a five-year design life while we were doing this ultimate project, because this project will require coordination with stakeholders, right-of-way acquisition. So if we're looking at, I guess, fatal flaws, we are going to have to acquire some right-of-way for this project, and that is not abnormal for a transportation corridor. That is not abnormal for a new water line. So that, I think that we can control that, the acquisition part. The unknown is still the same, and that is, again, San Carlos Irrigation Project. We will need to continue to work on getting a permit from them.
What kind of issues are we going to find with the magma flood control that runs through there?
I'm not really sure we're going to find issues on that, because we are going to have to push that section of the roadway to the south. If you look to your north as you're driving by there, I guess if you're driving westbound, if you look to the right side of your vehicle, out the passenger window, you'll notice that there are little, like, teeth in there. That's part of an energy dissipator. So that is designed to essentially slow down the water and make it a hydraulic jump. We have talked to the Magnum Flood Control District, and they are adamant that they do not want that disturbed. It is exactly where they want it, so we're going to have to push our improvements a little further to the south in that area. But the biggest, the biggest unknown is always going to be San Carlos Irrigation Project. I think we have several stakeholders we've talked to in the past year about this project. The major one who owns the property where this dedication and this acquisition will need to occur on the north is delighted to participate in this project. I won't mention any names, but there are others that might be a little bit more, again, not willing to participate, and we will have to go through, again, the eminent domain process. I hope to, in the next several weeks, come to council with an adoption of the ADOT right-of-way acquisition policy with amendments. It's sort of like a, like we do with our building codes, and adopt something along that so that everyone will have an understanding and expectation of the process, and there will be no confusion as we acquire right-of-way.
Okay.
Mayor, my commentary with all of this is can we please get updates regularly on the progress of this project? I feel like a lot of them have been waiting for so long for them to come to fruition, and I'd just like more regular updates, please.
Okay.
The T116 intersection improvements to SR79 and Hunt Highway, is there any way we can move that to this fiscal year, since it's only 350,000? Or is that designed?
Being that we're already in April, probably not, but we can push it to the earliest possible. We can start making submissions to ADOT and getting their plan reviewed and get it ready, if it's possible. It could be squeezed in at the end of the fiscal year, but I will tell you right now, I'm absolutely sure I do not have the funding through our I'm absolutely sure I do not have the funding through our normal mechanism. That funding is already expended, but I think that me and the finance director can sit down and find funds in other areas. We do have some funds available in other areas that could be utilized for this. So, it's very possible that we could be ready for either the end of this fiscal year, which is three months away, or July, early, early next fiscal year. But we can move that forward, yes.
As far as these projects are concerned, I think we need to be a little bit more informed on where we're at, what we need. If we need to, we can start to get with the state senators to see if they can get help to, I've, I've gone to the state and I've asked for money, and the question I had was, are my right-of-ways purchased yet? And I'm like, no. So, I, I need to know where we're at in some of these projects so that I can say, okay, yes, we do have this, and then they're going to say, okay, now that you have that, I can give you a certain amount of money. Without that, I look like an idiot going up there saying, we need so much money, but we are not even moving anywhere. So, I need that kind of information so that if we need it, we need to, if we need to work on right-of-ways, then let's get the right-of-ways, and then that way it opens it up for the, the state to turn around and help us financially.
We will be in the process of right-of-way acquisition very soon, and we are in the process of right-of-way acquisition for a project that is not mentioned tonight, which would be T-72, which is the widening of Hunt Highway north of Franklin. We are approaching our 60% planned semittal as a complete semittal. We've provided comments to Penal County and their engineer. They still need to provide a drainage report and geotechnical engineering, but we will be in the process here very soon of acquiring that right-of-way from the state land department. That is expected to get done in the first quarter of the next fiscal year. So, Q3 of this calendar year.
That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, the next item is the Multi-Gen Center. So, this year, or next year, we've earmarked $2 million for design. Paul King will be bringing this item to the next meeting on April 15th. It's the outreach. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. Mayor, members of council, we're be, we're looking to secure that meeting with the consultants so they can do a presentation of our findings so far to you in the pre-design phase.
Unless there's any other items, or discussion on that item, we'll move to wastewater. And I will remove from the presentation the items that are not in next year's budget.
So, this fiscal year, we will complete what was SU-83, which would be our, our SCADA system tie-ins at the wastewater plant. That pro, that project will keep its naming convention, but it will turn into a water project moving forward in there. So, we have two years of water SCADA upgrades, and so this is, if you will, this is a, our ability to monitor our wells, our storage tanks, the booster pumps, if they're running. You can all view that from a, a large screen TV, like maybe you'd see in a movie for transportation. You can do that for your water department. Currently, we have very, very, very little on the water side, and in some areas, nothing on the water side. So, this project will bring a full system of controls as well as the ability to monitor, and that's a two-year project. SU-100, the Main Street Wastewater Main Replacement. This project should be underway this fiscal year. This is just the remaining amounts. So, this had to fit within the T-14 roundabout project. We couldn't have traffic control on their project and traffic control on our project, and they not necessarily jibe with one another. So, our project was pushed out a little bit, and this is one of our ARPA-funded projects. There's no WIFA funding attached to this, and this will be just the, the finish, if you will, of that project there. So, the, this, this wastewater main is in poor condition, and it, it needed to be replaced. So, we're finally getting to this project this coming month. I think it should go to council in late April, early May. So, for, for clarification, Territory Square Phase One wastewater is a series of improvements that aren't necessarily attached to the Multi-Generational Center. It could support the Multi-Generational Center if and when it is cited. This project was always, and this plan was always to support the MDR-1 solicitation that went out in the form of an RFP. So, please do not combine this project with the Multi-Generational Center. It could be part of it. It could be separate, and of the council's direction is to make that parcel, and those parcels that come out of the Lomar Phase 1B shovel-ready, this project needs to move forward to provide a trunk line for the wastewater as well as a lift station for the MDR-1. But I want to stress, this is not necessarily tied to the Multi-Generational Center, and by building this does not necessarily mean, depending on where it is cited, it will support this. This was not part of the Multi-Generational Center. SU-84 is the South Wastewater Treatment Plant Ultraviolet Disinfection Replacement. The, the UV system at our current main wastewater treatment facility plant is no longer supported by vendors, and it no longer works correctly. How we are able to still meet our permit is there are other disinfection systems that are listed as secondary that we essentially utilize as primary. We need to make that repair because it is a requirement of the permit to utilize UV disinfection. The SU-88, South Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion, Expansion of the Headworks. Sometimes you hear this also called odor control. It's probably had at least somewhere between three and five names since I've been here. This project has been awarded, council's awarded this project. So, this is just, if you will, the remaining amount that will be completed next fiscal year. Some of these projects are 15 months away from being completed because of the long lead items. So, some of these projects, like the North Plant Abandonment Project, this project will be affected by long lead, well, five will be affected by long lead items. So, this is the remaining amount for those projects. We will complete as much as we can this fiscal year, and whatever is left over, we will complete next fiscal year. And this, apparently foreshadowing, this is the North Wastewater Treatment Plant Lift Station. We have awarded the Construction Manager at Risk Pre-Design Services. We are working towards 90% plans, and once we have a completion of those plans, we will come back to the council for the award of construction services to that same contractor that was, that was awarded for the pre-design services. With that, are there any questions as it relates to the wastewater projects?
No question.
No questions.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, any objections on these items?
None.
None. None.
All right, our last department is water. It's Chris again.
So, what happened to the mobile concrete mixer? That should have been in the Streets Department, and I saw you just closed the window.
No, I closed the water bar.
Okay. So, our first capital improvement project is a mobile concrete mixer. The one thing that we have noticed over time is that we have struggled to have settlement after these large water line breaks, even after applying compactive efforts. Due to the saturation of the soils, we seemingly still have settlement afterwards. So, what we'd like to do is buy a mobile concrete mixer where we could actually slurry these areas so that when we pave back over them, there will be no more settlement. I wouldn't say this is an industry standard necessarily, but for this type of work, you often see slurry going back in rather than just native materials and ABC. This will be also utilized by the Streets Department when doing small batch work to do sidewalk repairs, ADA repairs, stuff like that. We would utilize this versus our compact track loader mixer that we have. This is computer-operated, so once you punch in the parameters, it has the materials on site, and it disperses those, like, basically if you went to Sherman Williams and you put in your paint code, it mixes up the different pigments. This does the same thing between the sand, rock, gravel, cement mix. Well 5 rebuild was also awarded by council this year, and items for that project are being ordered. Most of this construction will occur next fiscal year. So, this is just the remaining portion of that. Territory Square Phase One, water. I'm going to repeat myself a great deal on what I said with Phase One wastewater. This, this improvement is not necessarily tied to the Multi-Gen by itself. This is, this improvement is needed for the area, the whole area, whatever were to develop, and it, and is needed today to provide some redundancy in that upper reach of our water system. So, this project is needed today regardless of development occurs, and it is especially needed if development occurs. So, we assume that this project is going to be awarded. It is under design and will be needed, no matter if, again, MDR-1 moves forward, MBR-2, the Multi-Generational Center. This is what is the council's vision to providing something that is shovel-ready in that Territory Square area. So, this will provide a 700,000 gallon storage tank or reservoir, a 1,000 GPM well, if not greater, and then approximately 1,200 GPM of booster pumps. This will also provide a trunk line of a 12-inch to the area, again, adjacent to MDR-1. This could be reconfigured, this trunk line, without any additional cost per se to support the Multi-Generational Center, or a design could be included to provide that trunk line to both areas, depending on where it is. This is one project that probably does support the Multi-Generational Center, but is not necessarily tied to the Multi-Generational Center. W-38, Water Line Replacement. This project started off primarily to support fire flows in the, in the areas to add some much-needed capacity. Any, any fire hydrant that is served by a two, three, or four-inch line is not going to provide adequate fire flows. So, that's where this project started off with, and at the same time, it has the benefit of replacing old lines that are more failure-prone, based on age, based on construction, and, and as well as the AC lines that we have to deal with, the asbestos concrete lines that are, again, more brittle, that if impacted by a piece of equipment, tend to fail much more than either ductile iron, and while ductile doesn't describe the characteristics of plastic, plastic is more malleable than even ductile iron. So, those kind of projects are supported by that. So, we, we take a certain area, and when we do a design for that area, and then we implement it the next fiscal year in order to have, again, these projects are disruptive, invasive to the community, so we stage those projects out. Typically, the large capacity, like 12-inch line projects, do not fit within the W-38. They are called out in a separate, much bigger project, if you will, as discussed with WU-66. So, WU-66 is a similar project to W-38, but it's specific because it is a high-capacity water line. So, WU-66, which was just recently awarded by the council, contains a water line on Adamsville from the existing hospital to Plant Road on Adamsville. It has a water line from Centennial, on Centennial from Adamsville all the way to Liberty or thereabouts, and that is the extent of that project as a whole. And that, again, was to provide fire flow for the existing Centennial Park subdivision, redundancy, because it was not a loop system. So, this was a, this was a project that was always to fix an existing deficiency, was never to necessarily support future growth that should have been paid by the development and community. The 12-inch along Adamsville was the idea of past councils to provide a corridor for that industrial zoning further to the west. Any questions about any of the towns' water line projects or water infrastructure projects?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, is there a consensus on the water items? Any objections?
No.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Well, that, that is FY '25 CIP Plan. As I stated at the beginning, we will bring this back on May 6th for adoption. There is a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00. The CIP item will be removed, but there is an executive session. So, tomorrow night's meeting is still on, and with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Carl, real quick, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, we're just going to make sure, are there any projects that we may have missed? And are there any council projects that we may not have included before we go and close out the CIP?
The one council, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just said not at this time.
I said the one council item that was not put back on the CIP was the electric outdoor signs that we requested a few years ago.
Is that the-
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, you are correct.
Is that the stop signs, the, no?
No, those are the informational signs that we had discussed.
Yeah, three signs for three different areas, so that we can advertise what's happening in, in the town.
Okay. Kind of in the medium-type digital boards, is that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Council, when you, when we come and bring this back, we'll go and make sure that we research that and put that back into the CIP budget.
You definitely will add that back.
Thank you.
Any other items to discuss? I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Vice Mayor has it from the floor.
With no other discussion, we'll move to item number five, which is called to the council, and we'll start with Councilmember Maldonado.
So, what I have is, um, like the Vice Mayor said, uh, I just want to reiterate, if there's anything that we need to bring up at the legislative level, that we, uh, that we work together to try to get these things out, so that way we can know what we're fighting for and, and, uh, try to, try to work with these legislators on monies, because, uh, last thing we want to do is go up there and not have our ducks in the row, like the Vice Mayor said. So, thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything?
I'll save what I have for the regular council meeting to give a report on events attended and meetings.
And I have nothing at this time, so we go to item six, I need someone to call this, uh, we need to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn from, uh, work session.
Second.
I got a-
Kristin seconded it.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This time we are adjourned.